Good evening. My name is Richard Wells and I'd like to welcome you to the April 8th, am I right? Right day, 2025, regular meeting of the Milton Select Board. Tonight, we are on the road, we are inside the walls of the Milton Arts Center located on Edgell Road. I'd like to begin by calling the meeting to order and go to item number two. And ask everyone in the room to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by, I want to give a special shout out to our hosts, the directors of the Milton Arts Center as well, some of the board of directors there as well, by thanking Kevin Danbruch and Joan Clifford for arranging for us to have this to happen tonight. It's a very fitting backdrop of money for this time of year in Milton. This is part of a local art show that is being displayed here by residents and their family. And I didn't know that was going to be here, but truly made it a fitting backdrop for tonight. So I wanted to make a public, public thank you to them for this. So item number three is public comment. I don't, we are going to do two public hearings. I don't see anyone signed up for public comments, so I'm going to, I do, sorry, sorry. Then please come forward and state your name. Even though I know where you are, but please state your name first. And thank you. Welcome. Public comment is limited to 21 minutes, so I'm going to ask you to please try and limit your remarks to three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. I'm Daryl Warner. I'm here to speak in favor of Article 37, Protection Against Light Threat Fair. I moved my family to 66 Martin Road in Milton in 1998. A Milton resident purchased a house next door to ours in 2005. She never moved in. We heard she, from neighbors, that she owned a house on dire ads. We never met her. The lawn service cut the grass in the summer with blowers blowing grass and dust all over them. In the spring and fall, they had up to three backpack blowers going. I used my snow blower to remove snow from her front sidewalk and sometimes her entire driveway. Make it look like someone lived there. I did that until 2014, nine years after she purchased the property, when a nephew with his wife and two children moved in. They were great neighbors. They moved out in 2019. The owner moved in when the nephew moved out in 2019. Immediately turned on two floodlights in the backyard and one backyard porch light. Those three lights stayed on 24/7, flooding our one deck and our backyard. We have a very nice deck and a large backyard. We always spent as much time as possible on our deck and in the yard. We eat every meal out there whenever possible, no matter what the weather, basically. And as we all know, COVID happened in 2020. Our deck and backyard became even more of a refuge, not only for us, but for our two children, our grandchildren and friends. During COVID, my wife asked if the lights could be turned out. The owner replied, no, I like them the way they are. And she walked away. The owner asked since she refused to speak with us and avoids us at all costs. The owner moved out in December of 2020. The lights still flooded our yard. We had police and town employees out to observe the situation. All said there was nothing we or they could do about the lights. June of 21, the lights have been shining 24/7 for two years. I sent a registered return receipt letter to the owner asking for the lights to be redirected, but they would not shine directly into our yard. And I asked her to contact us. I copied the town administrator, the select board, building inspector, planning board, planning director and attorney. The lights weren't redirected slightly in response to that letter. However, they still light up our deck and our backyard. They are a constant point of stress, 24/7, 365. They are a troubling nuisance and take away our enjoyment of our property. The lights are on right now, almost six years later. The situation is crazy, it's ridiculous, this is hostile behavior. Please, 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 we need this by law to stop this kind of behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else for public speak? Did you sign up? Hold on, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna remind, are you here to speak? Can you just tell me what you're here to speak on, what issue?
We're here to speak on the same.
Okay, why don't you just wait till the public hearing? That's probably the best thing to do. I, I. Okay. Anyone else to speak on anything other than the two articles I'm going to talk about in public carry time? Raise your hand, going once, going twice.
Yeah, two folks on line are going to take some comments.
Go ahead, I got this, I don't see it, where is it?
Uh, we'll start raising again.
Go to all, uh.
Go to characters.
Oh, I got it, I got it. Asking, is there anyone who wishes to speak? I'm like, do I phone you this to?
Thanks for hearing it, so.
I'm here.
What are you here to speak on?
I'm here to speak on the anticipated budget deficit that the school committee cut $1 million out of their budget about.
All right, this is public comments. So can you please state your name and your address?
Beverly Ross Denny, 107 Columbine Road.
I thought I recognized the voice. All right, thank you, you can begin.
Over the last two months, I've watched members of our school committee come to this select board humbly and respectfully because of a budget shortfall, which I truly believe was simply an oversight. Although someone has apologized and resigned over this, you asked the school committee to cut an additional $1 million to close the anticipated FY25 budget deficit. As town leaders, you chose to punish unsuspecting students whose only mistake was to need additional support. The consequences of your actions will impact these students and our community for years. I'm here to represent the hundreds of students who couldn't vote for you. These are the students that have relied on the small handful of math and reading interventionists. These interventionists help to keep them at grade level or from falling woefully behind their peers. Ironically, these may be the same students who will need, who will qualify for special education services with costs that rise higher than inflation after spending a school year without the guidance and support of this treasured faculty. When other departments have experienced budget challenges, the select board has willingly filled that gap. It makes me wonder, why won't you do the same for our children? For the first time in my memory, the Milton Public Schools was in the process of hiring someone whose sole responsibility was instruction, not human resources or other miscellaneous responsibilities. The district paused that hiring because of you. I recently received an email from my fifth grade daughter's teacher explaining that they have no paper for their assignments. It's clear to me that you value some Miltonians and it's not the next generation who will be responsible for our care as we age. The real question is, when will you show mercy? I thought at some point you would have come to the realization that educating our children isn't a budget problem to be solved. Our town has a revenue problem caused by a structural deficit. I thought you would have had empathy to understand that this town, the town still has the responsibility and obligation to educate our children. The ripple effects of your decisions will be felt for years. While this may not have been your intent, it will be your impact. As several district presentations have pointed out, Milton spends far less money than our peer districts per student for the outcomes that we've achieved. An extra $1 million of an override would cost the average property owner approximately $100. And you're willing to sacrifice these young people for $100. The irony is that in one breath, you grasp that there are families who own $1 million properties and cannot afford a tax increase, but you struggle to identify alternative sources of revenue such as private grants, commercial, commercial development or pilot funds. While I hope the next select board will rebuild what you've deconstructed, I also recognize that it will take years. It is unfortunate that your legacy will be dismantling the first support structure that our already underfunded district has had in a generation. Your legacy will also be your failure to address the revenue crisis that existed when all of you were elected, but could not manage to solve.
Thank you, Ms. Denny.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else on Zoom for public comment? Ms. Felton?
Thank you. Beverly Ross Denny is a hard one to follow. Deborah Felton, 20 Willoughby Road, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. I was really concerned that we have lost yet another grant because of our non-compliance with the MBTA Community Act. Now, the, now seniors, the Council of Aging, applied for a new van and because we are non-compliant on the MBTA community law, we did not receive that money. Now those vans take people to doctor's appointments all over greater Boston. And the impact will be felt by seniors all throughout Milton. Now I think that it's over a million dollars now that has, we've either lost or spent on fighting the law that the Supreme Judicial Court said that we had to comply with. I do not understand why we are still talking about being considered an adjacent community. And I would like the select board to take some leadership on this and get a compliant plan passed so that we can get funding that we need in this town. Thank you.
You. Anyone else? That will conclude public comment for tonight. Okay, so I'm going to go to item number four, public hearings. So what we're going to do, we're going to have two public hearings tonight. We don't have public hearings, I'm going to ask each speaker to limit their comments to three minutes. I'd like to get those two done. I'd like to get these two done within seven twenty, I'd like to be done by eight. To be on that, I might be number four, eight, but at, at eight o'clock, we're going to end both of them, so. Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to open a public hearing relative to general bylaw amendment, light trespass. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Musto, all in favor? Okay, so, who's here to speak on light trespass? Raise your hand. Okay, are you speaking together? Alright, why don't you come up and, um, please identify yourself by name. If you're assigned a sheet, are these people, I don't even know those. There's a sheet that identifies which areas of using your name and your address, please. I'm going to bring in the No, the written, there was some written support.
There's more, I believe Nick has received at least two more. Since he said the last one.
Ready? You can begin. Welcome.
Um, so we're both members of Milton Academy Sustainability Board. And tonight, as you guys discussed the bylaws which would, um, go against light trespass in Milton. We just wanted to urge you to consider how access light not only impacts Milton residents, but also how it disrupts the environment that we all depend on. Um, light pollution is more than just a nuisance, it's a growing ecological threat. Artificial light at night interferes with wildlife migration, feeding, and reproduction. Birds lose their way, insects die off hungry hammers, and even plants are thrown out of saying with nectar cycles. And beyond, and beyond environmental harm, light pollution erodes something deeply human, which is our connection to the night sky. When unnecessary lighting floods our neighborhoods, we lose the stars in the sky, we lose perspective of who we are. Uh, generations are growing up never having seen the Milky Way from their own backyard. That's why towns across the US, from Acton in Massachusetts to Flagstaff in Arizona, have, has strict enforceable standards for lighting. Many includes lux limits, curvews, and full shielding requirements based on the Dark Sky Guidelines. We encourage Milton to follow that example, not just to protect neighbors from intrusive lighting, but also to become leaders in preserving the night sky itself. And as members of the next generation, we're asking you guys to pass this bylaw as straight as possible. To ensure the skies and ecosystems we inherit are still intact. Thank you.
Yes. So if you wanna email that first. So for the record, I just wanna make note, uh, Mr. Warner's comments for this hearing, even though we gave it before the hearing. And the written support that we received or have received, uh, through our office.
There's been about eight emails that we've received in support of this, and then, did you say Mr. Hudson?
Yeah.
Also has, um, he has, he had a few just clarifications that he wanted to see to make sure that this wasn't abused.
Right.
Um, so, Mr. Lano and I can take a look at that.
Okay, anyone else on?
I have one online, um, Tucker Smith.
What's Ms. Smith? Sorry, my bad, my bad.
It happens.
I know, one of those days.
Uh, me too. Uh, thank you for recognizing me. Um, my name is Tucker. Yes, alright, well, I, I would like to, you know, be, be visible and not just invisible, um, through, through a letter to your, to your office. Uh, my name is Tucker Smith. I reside at sixteen thirty-two Canton Avenue and have for forty-six years. Um, I fully support Article thirty-seven. Uh, for clarity, the Oxford English Dictionary defines trespass as committing an offense against a person or set of rules. And I agree with the students, uh, from Milton Academy who, who preceded me. I treasured, um, the optic of night. Fireflies, lightning bugs, and the calm of darkness from our home, which borders the, the wooded, uh, Blue Hills Reservation. Today, uh, we are, we abut a fifty-four unit luxury housing development, uh, just called Wilk Woods. Stretches directly behind us. Some owners, not all, but, uh, they leave a pair of garage lights. Uh, porch lights, one or two, and a pole-mounted light on overnight. Dusk to dawn continuity, the extreme brightness and the sharp white color absolutely constitute a light trespass. I'm not a lighting engineer, but there are streetlights on the street. We have a, an excellent, uh, Milton Police Department. It, it is not a high-crime neighborhood that I know. Is it fear? Or just a habit? Whatever the reason, we have, um, it is critical that we humans reduce light pollution at night. What an, what is a nuisance to me is a killer to nocturnal wildlife species, particularly insects. I'm quoting, research is showing that porch and security lights are major causes of insect decline. So writes, uh, entomologist educator Doug Ptolemy. He adds, if nothing else, replace the white bulb with yellow tinted bulbs. LED bulbs, yellow, are the best because yellow wavelengths are the least attractive to, to nocturnal insects. Small efforts by many people would help to restore and preserve Milton's biodiversity and quality of nightlife. Article thirty-seven is a beginning. Increased public education would help. I thank you for your consideration and urge that this appear in the town meeting warrant and be voted favorably. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anyone else on Zoom? Anyone else here for this article? Accept the motion to close?
No, I, I, my comment is that this is, um, much needed thing. I think that, um, we've done our due diligence. It was in the Milton Times. Everybody saw that we are having this hearing today. So all the town meeting members know that they could have come and asked us questions. Um, and so I hope that we will have a unanimous vote at town meeting, since nobody was here to tell us any problems with it. And so I would.
I love it.
Do you have, do you wanna, before I close it? Yeah, go. Well, I, cause I was gonna make a motion, so go.
So why don't you make the motion second, and we'll just do it for discussion then, though. How's that? So you make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion. Hey, Ms. Musto and any other members that have comments.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the lighting bylaw.
I'll second.
So, I think it's a, a, around, very good, very well thought of. Um, I wanted to just address a couple of things that people have reached out to me about. Excessive glare, how would this apply to holiday lighting? Because a lot of people use holiday lighting and they'd like to know how that applies.
Absolutely. So this is not intended to, um, do anything with holiday lighting. Um, holiday lighting, you know, it, it's tricky because it can be a religious thing. And so we didn't wanna put in, when I talked to our town attorney, we didn't wanna put in specifics around holiday lighting. But this is absolutely not to deter anybody from celebrating their holiday, um, in the best way that they want. Be a good neighbor. Turn off your lights at eleven-thirty, midnight, like that, that's, you don't need holiday lights all night. But no, this is not here to do anything with that.
Okay, and then the other questions that people asked me were, um, and I'm glad to hear that, with the holiday lighting, because that was a big concern, because it's not clear in here. The other question was the outdoor lights on a limited motion sensor, so. The concern from some people that reached out to me, and I can relate to this because I used to work off shift as a nurse.
Mm-hmm.
Um, your lights, if you're on a motion, they'll go on.
Yes, that's right.
And that's, so that's gonna be okay.
Yeah.
And just keeping the light trespass within your own property.
Correct. So if you actually look, um, it talks about the lumens levels that are actually using a light, um, that are on a motion sensor. So the security lights are fine. Because they're on a motion sensor.
Okay.
We don't want anybody's safety to be in jeopardy when they're leaving the hospital or anything like that.
Okay. Um, and I think, I'm just trying to see if there was something else in the sheet that, that people reached out.
If people reached out to you, um, through email, I would love you to forward it on. Oh, I would at least, um, let me know who reached out to, I mean, since it's a public hearing, I'd love to know who reached out to you. You can get that to me.
And then, um, sure, and not everybody reached out. They ran into me a different place.
Um, you know what I mean.
Yeah, um. So, and then I think that was pretty much it. And will there be any examples for people to see with pictures? Of what some of these, because I don't think people know what lumens are.
I bought a lumen.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I wish I could remember it right now, but I'm gonna bring it to town meeting. And you're gonna, I will do it there and be able to see what lumens look like. Yeah, it's twenty-five bucks on Amazon. Um, in fact. The only thing is, is that if you look at your light bulbs these days, they actually say how many lumens they are. It's spelling. Producing, yeah. Um, so it's, it's very common to know exactly what you're putting into your, you know, porch lights, anything like that.
And the final question is in terms of who's going to oversee it?
Yes.
There is some question as to whether it should be more like, um, building department
Yes.
versus a select board, you know, to actually go out and look at these things. And a lot of, like, of course, in the winter, it's easier because in the winter it's dark earlier, but what about in the, like, summer and things like that? Are we paying somebody to go out and look at some of these? Um, places?
So, um, I would say yes, and it could be a police officer that goes by with a lumen thing and just clicks the button. It literally takes three seconds. It's like a, it's like a thermometer. Um, so if you notice, we added, um, in section under enforcement, section five B. We had, we added designated by the select board, so that allows us to designate whomever we want
Okay.
to handle this, whether that is the building inspector, whether that's, you know, Chief King, whomever that might be, the best handler for that moment. Um, that's why we did that. So Nick was, thank you Nick for putting that in, because we did hear that on the floor of town meeting.
Right.
And so I thought that was a great idea and we threw it in.
And the final question is if, if somebody has a problem with lighting issue. Is it per actual light bulb that they get in five, or is it per house?
Per house.
Okay.
Per house. Would you like us to clarify that in there?
Well, I think it should be because I would think that, you know, if somebody has a lot of lights. And, you know what I mean, like, people might think, is it an individual, you know, offense, or is it?
It's a per house. If you are found in, in, you know, out of compliance, it's a per house violation. But I will make sure that we have that right.
Uh, thank you.
I'm writing that down.
Those are the types of questions.
Anything else that you ran into people and they asked you them?
That's it. Alrighty, thank you.
I'm all set. I'm, I'm good.
So what I, what I'd like to ask you, Mr. Chair, is if I can have until Friday to make some of these changes?
So I'm gonna amend the motion, is it my motion or your?
Yeah, I said it, yeah. You said your motion, yeah. But I wanna add the part.
I think, I just made a motion to close, so we can, we don't have to vote, we can leave this until the twenty-second. We're gonna vote it, I mean, we're gonna.
We, we have to vote it to go.
So, the warrant, all the warrant committee has and all that will be printed in the warrant at this point. We have as.
We'll vote it subject to final comment. Okay, you okay?
Yeah, that's right. I'm just gonna make the changes that Ms. Musto just said.
The only, the only thing that you've made me think about was when you talked about enforcing it, like that's a tough one for police to enforce. That's probably something you won't have a conversation with before you get to.
Any town employee.
I mean, I don't see this being like, this isn't gonna be like speeding on twenty-eight. It won't be, it won't be like, so like, okay. Okay, so. Motion to close, all those in favor?
Yeah.
We, we.
And Nick, do we need a motion?
So, the warrant is essentially done and dusted and going to the printer.
When?
End of day tomorrow.
I get any changes by, by, before end of day tomorrow?
Board if they wanna so vote to change the article subject to.
The changes we discussed this evening?
And town councils.
I'll make a motion to approve the article, uh, subject to the changes discussed here and with town council approval.
Second. All those in favor? Alright, okay, we're good.
Thank you.
Good? Counsel? I don't even see him, I don't result. Okay.
Don't worry, I'll get him tomorrow.
Sure, I'm not worried. I can, I can get this, alright.
Thank you.
Okay, so this hearing is closed. I'm gonna make a motion to open um, Article four A. I'm gonna move to open a public hearing relative to general bylaws alcohol on town property.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Alright, this motion, this hearing is open.
Uh, as the board knows, a bylaw went to, and a warrant article to the special town meeting, um, that would allow this on both town property and town land. What was approved was just on town property. We don't have a draft of an article yet. I put up online for folks to view as a resource. Essentially what was approved at town meeting, except now adding back in town land, just so that there was something, some context for uh, people to be able to see. But like I said, we haven't drafted anything that was really very put together on this, so depending on the public hearing. If the board would like, we can start to work on something, um, but I just wanted to clarify in terms.
And, and am I right in that we also have to wait for the Attorney General to approve the, um?
Well, that's on, oh, yeah, that's written, all articles, yeah. Before they're, before they're, uh, engrossed.
Further, I don't know procedurally if another warrant article couldn't go to further amend the bylaw. But, um, we could work through that piece of it, but I just, I did put up a draft online, so there's something, so people had context as to what this is about. Um, and it replicated what was approved in February, just added back in town land. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to explain that. Thank you, sorry for the interruption.
No worries. Okay. So, who's here to speak on this article? Raise your hand, please. If you know they're gonna speak, okay, so. One, two, three. Okay, so I see like nine, so I'm gonna try to keep this ten, so I'm gonna try and keep this to, it's seven forty. We'll have to get this done by eight, let's go to like eight fifteen at the latest. If each person could just come up, sign their name. I'll try to limit the comments to three minutes, but, um, we're pretty good at coaching, we're pretty good at getting everyone. So, this hearing is open, who's coming for us? Who's coming up first to speak? Don't all jump at once. Mister Bobakio. Good evening. Thank you for coming. She, you know what?
I can't take the other two away, so that alone means. We don't usually have these many sign-up sheets.
Good evening, welcome.
My name is Joe Paralakio. And I'm here in support of resubmitting the general bylaws amendment, chapter one oh five regarding alcohol on town property. I'm a town meeting member for Precinct Nine, a Milton business owner. And the president of, uh, the Milton Chamber of Commerce. The Milton Chamber of Commerce is a nonprofit organization of over a hundred and ten local businesses. And we work hard to support the local community through sponsorships of school events. Sports teams, and numerous other causes. Fundraisers, and also by hosting events that bring the community together. Our most popular events are the Halloween stroll and the holiday stroll and tree lighting. That bring peaceful gatherings of several hundreds of people of all ages to Manning Park. Businesses give out treats and we offer entertainment, music, and many other fun activities. One of the repeated pieces of feedback we received from participants was requesting to have something for adults. Not all about the kids, um, and for the past four events, over the last couple of years, we've offered food and alcoholic beverages. Adults can buy drinks from a limited beer and cocktail menu. Adults can buy drinks from a limited beer and cocktail menu. We work and we work with the town to abide by all the rules to offer alcohol. We coordinate with Milton Police and Fire for the events, including closing off a cut through from Adams to Brandon. And we purchase a one-day event insurance policy and pay for a police detail of at least. Four officers to monitor any crossings on Bryant's, Brandon, and Adam Street on both sides of the park. We take great pride in creating a safe environment for everyone and bringing them together to enjoy the beautifully renovated park. That may be in so long time. Um we have not had a single incident at any of our events, including the past four where we offered food and alcoholic beverages. So, you know, I was extremely shocked and disappointed to hear that our events were being highlighted as reasons to amend chapter one oh five to disallow alcohol. I would actually argue that it should be used as an example of how the original bylaw could be followed successfully and responsibly. Therefore, on behalf of Milton Chamber, I ask that the bylaw be considered for resubmission.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who's next? Good evening.
Good evening.
I know you're ready if you just state your name.
Okay.
For all those millions of people watching at home, and by the way, we are live, we wanna thank Milton Cable, we thought this was going to be a um. Taped and then put onto the YouTube channel at eleven o'clock tonight, but thanks to uh their skill and expertise.
We're fine.
We're around the world today.
So good evening, so, oh, well, okay, I'll skip the greeting, my name is Susan Kofaser and I live at one fifteen Warren Avenue. I'm speaking tonight to express concern about proposed bylaw amendment. That would allow the sale of alcohol on town land, including parks and other public spaces. To date, I have not heard a publicly articulated rationale, although I guess I did just hear one um with the previous speaker. Um what are the benefits of this change? Nor is it clear what, who the constituents or organizations beyond the set uh select board are who are driving this proposal, and I guess I heard that now too from the previous speaker. Um but this leaves me unsure how this change would aligns with our town's values of health, family, and inclusivity. From my perspective, this change introduces public health risks and undermines longstanding community norms. Milton has traditionally been a town where families could attend public and town-sponsored events. In our parks without expecting to encounter alcohol sales and consumption. That norm constitute, contributes to safe welcoming spaces for all, especially for youth and for members of our recovery community. We know from extensive research presented at the last town meeting that adult drinking in public spaces normalizes alcohol use for young people. And that community norms strongly influence youth behavior. Massachusetts has the sixth highest rate of underage alcohol use in the country, and Milton youth drink at higher rates than the state average. And Milton has a visible and active recovery community, offering town-sanctioned alcohol at public events. Risks further marginalizing residents in recovery or affected by addiction. If the select board does proceed with an article to allow alcohol on public land, I would strongly urge the bylaw to include evidence-based safeguards. While Milton's current one-day license rules include some important protections, they do not go far enough to reflect public health best practices. I recommend the following areas be included directly in the bylaw. Enforcing of alcohol-only areas within the events, use of wristbands and ID checks. Use of distinguishable cups for the alcohol. The limiting the number of drinks per transaction and the amount of alcohol per drink. Advanced noted notification to neighbors that alcohol is going to be available at the events. Uh no alcohol advertising aside from at the point of sale to communicate price and product. And data collection by the town to track and publicly report on licensed use complaints and public health outcomes. Let's be clear, this is not about prohibiting all alcohol use, private events and businesses have different expectations and different oversight. But a public land belongs to all of us, and changes to how we regulate it should reflect the broadest community interest. Including youth, families, and people in recovery. Thank you for your time in considering these recommendations, I hope that we continue this conversation with more transparency, data, and community engagement.
Thank you. Who's next?
My name is Joe Perry Linger, and I live at nineteen Oak Road.
Wait until we pass that, that was good.
What's that?
Wait to double task, you're writing it and saying.
You're saving time to get an extra point, you can have an extra thirty seconds. Good evening, good evening.
So um thank you all for letting me speak for a couple minutes, um and I am speaking against this particular bylaw, um I am, so I work. I live in Milton, I work as a physician, primary care physician, and that's listened to thousand nine. And I also work in addictions, um so I, I see quite a few people um. Having with alcohol use disorders along with another, another addiction, um. One of the things that's unique for people with alcohol use disorders that I see is. The challenging thing is that they often don't think of that problem, um and one of the, they'll often start drinking very young, as teens or young teens. And they're drinking then because they see their parents drink, they see their family, friends drink, in, in these social gatherings, and so it's just, it's normal, it's part of life. And um so it gets really difficult as an adult to think past that, think that it's not a normal thing, um and that. Concerns me, um just that, that modeling behavior that we can be creating another. Instance where we are among that sort of behavior for our kids in the community. Um especially when we know the effects that alcohol has on kids, um you know, that really our kids start drinking. The more likely they are to end up with an alcohol use disorder, um also their, starts to affect their, their brains aren't developed until they're twenty-five. So you're having more cognitive influences on with the alcohol when they're young, um also increases anxiety, depression, kind of these different uh behavioral disorders. So just get very concerned about the effects that this might have on our kids at the moment, so modeling the behavior. As well as the effects that it has on the kids within the community, um. And yeah, I guess that's, that's primarily what I wanted to say, is that as a position and community member, I. I get concerned about how this could influence our kids.
Thank you, doctor.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. I saw a hand, okay, good thanks.
Better than frozen.
That's how they know it is. We'll just roll you out of order, yeah, good evening.
Good evening. Not sure.
That's what you did, doctor.
Hi, my bar. Um good evening, my name is Jill Clark, I live at twenty-six Harold Street, I'm a town meeting member in precinct four, um I have. Both um process and substance uh questions that I um would like to share with you. Um the, the first question I have is um this, you've uh indicated that this is a public hearing, open this as a public hearing, um. I don't know what the, if there are requirements around process for advertising public hearing, but I was notified that this was happening um via email of the town board that I had signed up uh with yesterday. And um I work for a state agency, uh probably getting regulations, we have whole public hearings that would not fly in my job. Um there's a lot going on in town right now and um I'd prefer folks to, to get here on short notice, um so I'm glad that I could make it tonight. Um but I, I wonder about how many people might be interested in.
So we, we're required to post on our agenda, well, we have a public, we actually announced this.
We posted it in a month's time.
In a month's time as well.
Over, over a week ago.
Yeah, and we announced three weeks ago, actually twice now that we were going to do this, and actually it was gonna be on the road, we were going to take, it was pretty public that we were coming, it's. This is the most people we've had, other than on the school issue, the most people we've had in a long time at a meeting, so.
So we, we did everything that we were supposed to for our clients.
Great, good to know, thank you, I appreciate that, um I saw that out yesterday, so. You know, I, I think, you know, thinking about what the words stakeholders might be and where they might be interacting with um the information and um. And who is able to come um on a two dinner. Um. The next question I have about process is that um this is, I, I think this public hearing is very different from the one that we just had on light fast pass because we made a decision at town meeting, some of those things back for study if I recall correctly. Whereas this one was voted on at town meeting, so we had a discussion at town meeting, we had a number of members on the floor, we voted on it, we made a decision as town meeting, um which is town meeting's um obligation to um to pass town bylaws. And decided to pass it the way that it was, and so. I'm not really clear if, my understanding is that you can go back to town meeting with something that's substantially similar, so it looks like, I'd love to hear your thoughts on that as well.
So just to be very brief, it was brought to us very quickly to bring it back. Wanted to take a sec, because as you know, it only lost by three votes, they wanted to revote it. Several approached us as well as the other town meeting members who were there, wanted to revote the next night, there was a process to bring something back for a second vote. And we decided, given the fact that it seemed that the coalition was asking for a public hearing, we decided, okay, well, we will not bring it, we'll bring it forward in May. And we would have a public hearing to allow, so that's the process that we took.
Appreciate it. Um. Another process question that I have, and I appreciate these uh responses, um is um the, the first speaker um brought up. Events where alcohol was being served um on public land, and my understanding was is that the purpose of this is. To create a situation where alcohol can be, be, being served on public land.
So it was believed, it was, it was a technicality that was found, no one realized that this, this prohibition existed. On the deck, and that's how this came to light that created the initial article, we knew about it in certain buildings, because this building has, it's written into their lease, you know, town building. A town building now, um that's how it happened, that's how the article came to be.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm lost, and I'm probably not the only one, so I, you know, I, I think that um. It, so it seems like something that was happening was not supposed to be happening, and now people are upset that, that there's, this is confusing and I think making sort of it.
There are multitudinal laws and bylaws in this town, well, if you work for a company, it's understand a little bit. So it was not known that there was a prohibition that existed, and it was only after the first few events that we realized that, that it did exist. And that's why we brought the article to town meeting for, the article actually became bigger than what we actually intended it to be, it was actually for outside. Then it was asked to make it buildings and outside, so that's how it got to where it was at town meeting.
I understand. As a private citizen, not knowing the law doesn't protect me if I break it, right, and so, so which is.
People break the law every day, believe it and all over about it.
I understand, yeah, as well, um so there's, there's a lot of confusion here, and I think. In, in closing then, I want to sort of tag on to the last two comments, and particularly um to echo Susan's comments. What is the purpose, what is the, the um, the problem that we are trying to solve here, and are we really creating a solution that has a problem that we are trying to solve? Or are we in fact creating different problems by the way that we are sharing our community with our community members and modeling our users for our kids?
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. That's five minutes and five seconds, okay, who's next? Ms. Kofit, please. Good evening, you're ready to move on. Thank you again for allowing us to be here, and thank you again for everything you do, this, this voice does. Mister Zolzall smiles.
Good, thank you all.
Don't get any ideas, we're gonna hang around here.
Thank you all for visiting us, you know, we, I mean, it's nice to have you here, um truly.
We're happy to be here.
I'm just writing my.
Ho- hopefully future bullets will do the same.
Yeah, it would be nice, um so my name is Joe, I'm the director at the other center. And I'm speaking in support of alcohol on town, which is around the door, et cetera. Um a couple of people have come up to me and said, um what's all this about, meth and the alcohol? And we don't really wanna be going for alcohol, um that's really not our mission, um but in context, um. As an nonprofit, we pulled permits, maybe, this past year for the chamber. To um in order to, because that was some done, that alcohol couldn't be on there, so we pulled the permits, pulled them. Um we also sponsored a new event um with the chamber, Back to Business. Um it was about, and it was the first Friday event um in September, and it's um. It's a community event, um organized. For everyone, but really, our really angle was really about opening up that space for musicians. It's a great space for music, I mean, it doesn't seem like it would be, it's surrounded by, you know, the highway is, um. But when you're there, it's, it, you know, the acoustics are, are good. So that was our real goal for doing this, was to open up the space for musicians and, you know, really for any of them, um for. Um so, so that, that's why, that's why we put the work in of the event, was um in order to open it up for them, um. You know, for that, there's a lot of, and, and Joe, the head of the chamber, um said a few of these things, but I don't emphasize them. There's a lot of safeguards and place organs, first of all, you have to get permission from the SWAT board, you have to get insurance. Two police details that are hired, you have to apply for a one-day alcohol grant of fifty dollars. Um you need a license center or, or tips certified bartenders. And um at Manning Park, the event has to be over at dusk, which is um, which goes on September sixth, that was at seven thirty, so everybody was up by seven thirty. There's um one more that I don't know, is that Milton has over five thousand households without children. Um when people come to events here, um they sometimes will not, you know, it's nice to meet other people in town. Um if you, if you don't have children, sometimes you're knocked out of meeting other people. And um in response, I just wanna say, these are responsible, community-led events. They support artists, musicians, and adult connection, and. I appreciate you bringing this back um uh for um, you know, for my town.
Thank you, thank you very much. Do I have anyone else?
Good evening.
Thank you so much for allowing me time to speak, my name is Margie Spear, and I live at ninety-five Rana Place.
I know that's true.
I know, you know that's true, and I'm uh in precinct seven. Um I am here tonight to talk about the bylaw because um what is common up around drinking on public property? It's not the drinking on public property that I have an issue with. I started my career as a clinical social worker, and I was working in drug rehabilitation centers. And I was working particularly with young people, eighteen to twenty-year-olds, who were in trying to get into recovery from drug and alcohol addiction. Now alcohol addiction may not seem as big of a deal, but it is. And it was that time during my work as a social worker that I realized I wanted to work to prevent this from. And it was that time during my work as a social worker that I realized, I wanted to work to prevent this from starting in the first place. So I started, I went down an entire career path in public health, got my doctorate in intervention design, and spent twenty years focusing on adolescent substance use prevention. And that's what I do, I'm a professor at the Tufts University School of Medicine, and I design interventions around adolescent substance use prevention. So I have a very specific expertise in this area, and am targeted by places around the country, my opinion and my thoughts on how to prevent substance use, and in fact, I'm giving a talk next week on this exactly. And my issue is not with alcohol, it's not with drinking on public property, it's with the modeling and socialization that we do with our children around alcohol, particularly in this town. I have lived here for over ten years, I have two kids in the Milton Public School System, I, my, our street, as we well know, is extremely popular on Halloween. And I see people walking by with their solo cups, and you know, the socialization around alcohol around Halloween, which is really couldn't be more about kids than any other holiday. We are socializing our children around alcohol. It is a very different thing to having twenty-one-plus wristbands, the, the safeguards that um, Susan spoke about before. That is very different to do that than say, we're gonna allow drinking, particularly for uh, events that are targeting, that are specifically for our kids. What does that say to our children that we as adults cannot enjoy ourselves without alcohol? Um, the first speaker talked about how, for the Halloween stroll, adults were saying, this shouldn't be all about the kids. Really? It's Halloween, it shouldn't be about the kids. This is specifically about the kids, and it should stay about the kids. He also said that, that this part, the goal of this was to bring everyone together to enjoy the beautiful part. Why do we have to show kids that we as adults cannot have fun without alcohol? That is something that we, when we socialize kids, and this happens even more so for younger teens than older teens. They see parents drinking, they see their friends' parents drinking, and they see their parents' friends drinking, family members. Again, there's, there is a way to do this responsibly, but it doesn't have to be all the time, and events that are centered around children should really not have a focus on alcohol. And I feel extremely strongly about that, and again, this is my entire field, and so I understand the role that normalization and socialization have in adolescent social too. So I would implore you to think about the safeguards around adult alcohol use, and have any bylaw that may be changed, have events that should, that are focused on youth, not involve alcohol. Thank you.
It's eight oh seven. Anyone else? Coming together?
Um, sure.
Long title, say, Mr. Keel.
Um, I'd like to make a few comments about alcohol consumption in the town. My name is Steve Keel, Stephen Keel, I've lived in town for, most for forty-four years, I raised three boys here, um.
Many, many, many instances, many um, issues over the years. No, 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 you, you, you've been a warrior on many issues over the years.
Um, I have a background in substance addiction, prevention, intervention, treatment, recovery services at the local state and the national level. Um, and I'd like to just make a few comments about the, the article that's being discussed tonight. We know that drinking patterns, including the age of onset and the frequency of drinking are correlated with adult drinking patterns, and the risk of developing alcohol related problems later in life, that's a huge fact. Much has been written about this by many institutions and organizations, and I'm not gonna go into that tonight, it's been spending a lot of time. This is one of the main reasons, as the town considers this article, that we wanna get it right, we wanna protect it, you're all on board with that. Many towns, cities in Massachusetts and across the country have rapidly the same or similar leadership. There are many examples of proven regulations, guidelines, put it to place, that allow for alcohol consumption on public property and yet protect youth. Why don't we borrow some or all of these ideas that are already in place, that have been used by some of these committees, to either enhance or flush out some of the things that we already have? I don't have those particular ones with me, but I can show you, for instance, town which has a list of regulations that are specifically pointed at, written down, talk about location, talk about cordoned off areas, talk about the number of drinks that can be purchased, talk about ID's, talk about tips training, and a number of things. That could be refined, but there's some really good guidelines here. Town of Winchester's done some.
We do, the, the guy I said, I almost remember that exactly.
It's on, maybe just on something. And I'm just saying, we have examples, proven examples out there, why don't we borrow some ideas from them, and maybe enhance what we have? Um, we also have local expertise in the Milton Coalition, uh, that we could play, they could play an active role in developing this article. Why don't we involve them in this process as we go through? We're, we're going to be stronger together if we do it. As opposed to having some adversarial relationships, why don't we get together and see if we can come up with something that we're going to pass this article, and we wanna have alcohol in certain settings. Why don't we do it in a way that is very carefully laid out, guidelines are strong, we all agree with them, and can protect our youth the best way possible? We really have an opportunity here to model good adult behavior for youth regarding the consumption of alcohol, I just didn't take your word for it, let's start that. Because alcohol is legal, people do consume alcohol, we can model good behavior if we set out to do that.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Steve. Margaret Carles, nineteen given, street precinct four, um, thank you for having this tonight. Um, I'm here really to echo what a lot of my friends and colleagues have said. Um, uh, there is a compromise that we can come to, we can include some protections in this bylaw to make it safer for our youth and our, our children and our teens specifically, um, and there are plenty of best practices, many of which have been um, talked about here. Um, including secure perimeter around serving areas, ID checks, um, at the entrance to those serving areas, wristbands to identify attendees aged twenty-one and over. Uh, distinguishable, distinguishable cups that allow for the identification of alcohol versus alcohol-free beverages. Um, alcohol advertising that's limited to inside designated serving, serving area, limiting the number of drinks, limiting alcohol drinks by ABV. Um, restricting one-day licenses to events that are centered on adults. And I'd also love to see this blackboard consult with the Board of Health and/or the Substance Use Prevention Coalition on best practices in order to prevent present and future youth substance use and mid-drinking. And um, concerning the rules and regulations for the one-day liquor license, I do think that should be looked at on a regular basis. Um, I've looked at it a lot lately, and um, I think it needs to be updated, and there are plenty of examples out there. Um, at the February town meeting, you did include some, um, very specific instructions in the bylaw, like the tips training. And I think some specific recommendations or specific requirements for outdoor events should be included, um, if you choose to make any changes for that. And there's plenty of expertise in town that can help with that.
Thank you. Will you leave the Wakefield one with me, the last one? Wish I had to, whatever you have, I'll take it. Okay. Just in the while, I'll take the thing that was for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I was, I said ten past, I wanna be on the ten past, Mr. Zolz, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Porter. So this is good government, and it seems to me there is compromise for those who seek it, and there is consensus for those who wish it. Uh, it seems to me that there have been some general suggestions, they could be included, four or five suggestions, they could be included in this bylaw to make it win. These are not newfound things, new found things, these are best practices that have been used before, communities, not just Wakefield, but Mediate, and as a Wisconsin project and a Wyoming project, and so, these are best practices that have been used.
We're not calling Wyoming, nobody.
No, we, we, some, some lessons in my opinion. Um, so these are best practices that have been used before, and it seems to me it can be a win for this community to meet the needs of the RAC Center, meet the needs of the Chamber of Commerce, while providing the protection that our, that our public health professionals have told us are very important. So thank you for having us, and this is great government, and good luck, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Kevin, Mr. Dan. Kevin Dan Bruce, associate, I don't, I don't even know whose title is.
Kevin Dan, I'm also on the fourth year, New York Center, and also very active in the Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, you are.
Um, so just a couple of comments, um, so Manning Park, across the street here, it is an underused resource here in town, it's even been so fun at, you know, this big operation that you know, took so much money and time, and not, not much happens there, but we proved that wrong back in the fall at this event, the Back to Business event. It was a wonderful event, you know, there's a video on, on Milton Cable that, that they took some great video of that, you can see families having a great time, you don't feel like you're on, on the expressway. It's a great space to be, it's a great place for live music, it's a great place for people to get together and socialize. Couple of comments that, and, and when it comes down to this, this whole topic we're talking about, that's the, that's basically the, the, the piece of land that we're talking about, of course, maybe a couple of parcels, but.
Farmers market.
Yeah. Couple of comments that came up early today were, um, someone stated earlier, public land belongs to all of us. It's not kind of, we love to have children's events that are focused on children, but another comment that was made, five thousand households in town don't have children? You know, why are we limiting the use of this piece of land strictly for basically children events? If you're gonna have an adult social event. Let's be honest, you know, I, I looked it up, at least seventy to ninety percent of adult social events do include availability of alcohol. If you're gonna have a success, successful social event for adults, you really do have to have that availability, that option anyway, to, to block off that option, even making it possible, is just is cutting off a lot of possibilities for a big portion of the, uh, of the town here. That's funny.
Thank you. It's all right, I think we're good, I'm going to close this hearing right now, is that all right? Okay. Yes, all discussions, so I'll close it, so motion made by Mr. Zol, I'll second, so I was closing the hearing, all those in favor? Aye, and then we'll get into discussions. Um, I have a lot to say, but I'll go last as I normally do, because I kind of, like, for those who are here, I kind of take responsibility for this as the one who they get it out, and one who really wanted to see this happen. Um, a full disclosure, I was the first one to rent, um, I rented the host. Like Mr. Zol, music is very big in my home, and uh, senior school, myself rented a stage, and I had some people, and we hosted a concert there at the end of school, I think, three years ago, my wife's band, and as well as, also Mark Mars and Catwinds, and, and um, I believe it was that where it got the name, the Oasis on the Isle, that, because I had never heard it before, but I knew then that there was some potential, but I'll connect that, let the other members comment first, and then, anyone else, anybody? Go, Mr. Zol.
I, I just didn't.
Oh, he took notes, oh, it's good.
Thank you for your work. Um, I, I think, you know, I, I, at first, I would love to have, um, Mike show up and cheerlead us at every meeting.
You're welcome.
For doing the government, it feels really good to hear that. Um, I do think that this is the government, and I do, you know, I, I, I appreciate um, that, you know, we have a limited, uh, microphone, uh, for those, you know, to, to, to notify folks. Um, so, for, for Ms. Park, I'm, I'm sorry that, um, you know, you didn't find out about it in time, but you know, the, 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 several of the suggestions that came up here, I think, were excellent. Um, I, I think we should think about the language and, uh, in, in the bylaw to include some of that specific, um, some of those specific suggestions, I mean, this is proven science. Um, you know, we've made tremendous progress in town in one area, uh, we don't have kids partying in the woods the way that we used to do them. Um, I've been, you know, on the youth task force previously, and I still get updated from the, the security at Cunningham Park. And it's been cut down dramatically, and a lot of that's been because of the education of parents about what those parties really look like. So I think that we can do both things, right, we can have events that have alcohol in a responsible way, and we can make sure that folks are aware of the dangers that alcohol, uh, for, in particular, children and modeling bad behavior have. Um, so, you know, I think part of that modeling behavior is, you know, having things like a cordoned off area. Um, I've been, I think all of us have been to festivals and places where, you know, you have to have a wristband, you have to have your, your ID check, I think that sounds really very sensible. Uh, I might from there too, also availability of non-alcoholic, um, spirits, like, not any beer.
They do that, they do.
Yeah, I think, you know, just to, you know, some folks that are in recovery, or they just don't feel like drinking, but wanna hang out and have a, you know, what looks like a beer, and tastes like a beer, but isn't a beer. Um, I think there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of possibilities here, I would love to see a little work, a little more work on the language of the, of, of the bylaw, I don't know that you know, I, I, it's true that we can go back to town meeting, it's not zoning, so we're not prohibited to go back, you know, for two years, but I, I, I do think it would make sense to have maybe a little bit more, um, content in what the outdoor licensing would look like, um, before we get it signed off. I'm cognizant of the fact that we have a town meeting in a couple of weeks, and it's hard to get language together like that, uh, that quickly, and I'm also cognizant of the fact that nobody wants to drink here on the, the park in January, so, you know, we're probably talking about trying to get something done for the summer.
Yes.
Um, those are, those are my thoughts, and I, and I'd just like to close by, by thanking you, Mr. Chair, for, um, having this hearing, by making sure that we have a lot of people here uh, to participate in, because I do think that these kinds of open discussions are really hel- healthy, uh, and I do think that compromise is possible.
Thank you, Mr. Zol. Go ahead.
I, I, I agree with my colleague, and I'd like to thank all those who spoke, because I think we have some very good ideas, and I, I, I think we can incorporate those ideas into, into some workable solution.
So the first thing I think we need to do, because even though we have town bylaws, as anyone, as attorney's rules, and anyone else who's attorney knows that much of what is outlined in these, what is codified under chapter one thirty-eight, so, because that's usually what we give our licenses under, whether it's a one-day of, of its, which is now the more it's actually the preferred way in Massachusetts to have applicants for one-day licenses, which is similar to what they do at the back here, use someone that has the statutes, the statutory approved CADA's license, because they have to meet almost everything that you've talked about tonight as far as requirements, just to have that, and that's an annual um, license that's approved under chapter one thirty-eight, that is one of the difficulties, and just, just to kind of let everyone in the room know, in, in Milton alone already, those who host events getting one-day liquor licenses, which we were, this was not an unusual, like, I'll take the, not the credit, I'll take the hit for thinking of it. Um, Curry, Hutcherson Field, Trustees of the Reservation, Ford House Museum, Melvin Academy, one of the biggest ones now is Historic New England, Eustace Estate, hosting events with alcohol all the time. Hopes Pond, D C R, Blue Hills, all of them, um, have hosted suffers, it's, so when we thought of the idea, and to both Ms. Bradley and Mr. Zol, it really, I'm with, like, to those on the public health side, and, and particularly to my long friend, Mr. Keel, and I mean that, like, he knows I mean, I spent forty years in public safety in this town, I've seen the worst of the worst, whether it's a ten-year-old, a three-year-old, or an eighty-year-old. So when those who are in the public health field talk about hazards of alcohol, I get it, when my neighbor talks about people walking around with, with, I get it, when I was first going to my daughter's baseball games, I saw it, so I, I, I understand that, and that's, I, I can't, I wanna refer to the process, the town meeting, what was set up, we're not looking to have keg parties anyway. And we're not looking, to me, on it, absolutely, I, I'm not even looking to have them, like the Kellys, the Andrews, the Shields, you know, Manny Park, and what will now be the new, well, it's approved, see, Mr. Callen. See, Mr. Callan hands here tonight, the new park that's being the, designed for, for, um, site of where the farmer's market is held now. Are places where I believe as, as a public safety professional, more than even an elected official, is, is, is articulated by both. The gentleman from the chamber and especially our friends at the MAC can be done. I've watched, it's been done and they've done it, so the only time to wrap it up, okay. So that's where I'm at on it, but thank you all. Um, we've taken up, we'll take those and then, okay, go ahead, go ahead, absolutely.
Thank you. Um, so on our packet, Nick, it's listed under the, the June sixteen meeting?
Correct.
And is that where it's gonna stay? Is it not going on the main town meeting?
That was not, we had talked about full stuff off the May, so.
So that's why it's on June.
Pushed it to June.
And once.
Let me tell you.
That's fine, I, I, once it's passed, does it have to go through the AG's office?
Yes.
So that can take the rest of the summer?
Ninety days essentially.
But I think.
Somewhere in October.
I think we'll be all right by October, the process in June, I think we will.
Okay.
So what, is that the process?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're processing.
Okay.
Ninety days from upon submission, so turning around, getting everything done.
Sometimes it's even faster.
Well, that always.
So, um, we're okay with that, so.
So if members wanna, so what I can do is I heard a couple of comments that.
Can you just.
For instance, I can recirculate a graph incorporating some of the comments that folks made, man.
And can you do me a favor, pull one thirty eight?
Yeah.
And pull on anything, some of this is already listed, a lot of, and we don't want to duplicate our effort.
Okay.
And, um, then we can look at some of the others.
And do we want to limit it to certain public spaces?
I don't even want to get into that, I felt, I did think, I did think of it, but, but that being an argument, it's not meetings, I did think of it though.
Run it on.
I mean, you can always start by limiting it and then if people are like, well, we, we should add a site tax or something new is developed and you can.
Yeah, I can think of three places, the gazebo, was it, was it.
Usually you have the doctorate, yeah.
I didn't think of the gazebo.
Yeah, weddings, maybe the toast fair, right? That was, that was Ms. Mustard, yeah, commencing that, so that space, the, the eighty four farmer's market space and Manny, yeah.
Okay.
If we want to.
You could also limit the number annually to like ten or something like that.
We've done that before within the statute, um.
Doesn't like the limit.
Stat, sorry, literally statute of one days, our location can only have twenty, twenty eight.
Any applicant, an applicant is limited, and so use those forms, get their.
Get, yeah.
We could have, the Milton could have as many as we wanted, as opposed to just the same.
No, yeah.
Okay.
I think safeguards, because maybe we can start charging for people to have, get married on gazebo.
I think we already do.
Yeah, we do. Or can make some more money if they can have champagne, all right, let's, let's get, let's get going.
All right, thank you all very much and, um. We'll move on to the, 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 posting here and moving on, okay?
Yeah, number five.
Number five, item five, discussion, update approval, community preservation committee FY twenty twenty six project recommendation. Good evening, you don't have to sign in, but you could just, it's taken.
Um, thank you, my name's Tom County, we think for sixteen, Warren O Street, uh, precinct board, county member and chair of the community preservation committee.
Uh, Jenny Muckel, uh, at large, vice chair of the committee preservation, um, committee and I'm at one ninety seven.
Hugh Jackson for David Evans Street, and the fiscal liaison for the region town.
Great. Thank you for the invitation and, uh, to talk about what is one of Milton's and things, we're a little biased, but success stories over the last four years.
We're gonna talk about that tonight, go ahead.
Good, um, we love talking about community preservation, um, that and, uh, how it's been implemented in the last three years and so. I'm gonna go through briefly a, a short slide presentation and, uh, Nick is gonna help me advance the slides, or he is gonna advance the slides. So first of all, the committee is a committee of nine people, um, you've just met three of them. Uh, in addition to the three of us, Joe Duffy, uh, representing the housing authority, William Carbo, the conservation commission, uh, Rob Leavage, the Parks and Rec, uh, um, represented Kathleen McDonald at large. Um, Cheryl Pogias represented the planning board and Linda Weld, uh, the historic commission. Essentially, there are six seats from committees and commissions and three at large seats. Um, this slide also features our general advertisements, especially around this time of year. Uh, we solicit, uh, applications from residents and town departments and everyone in town. Um, so the deadlines coming up for the eligibility application are for FY twenty sixth is due on May thirtieth. So there's still a little bit of time for people to get the eligibility application, which is a streamlined application. And then for full funding, if, if the eligibility application is accepted and advances to the next round, the full funding deadline is due September twenty sixth, next slide. Community Preservation Act, I think most people know, um, here in this room, uh, about it, but, uh, there are people watching, as you said, Chair Wells. Um, so this has been an enormous statewide success for, to, in, in year two thousand, Governor Siluchi signed, um, the Community Preservation Act into law. It's enabling legislation that depends on local communities to adopt it. And the only way local communities can adopt it is by a vote of the voters. Um, in Milton, in two thousand and twenty, sixty-three percent of voters in the November election, so it's a large turnout. Um, voted in favor of assessing one percent surcharge on their own property taxes with some exemptions and we'll be getting to that. Um, and, uh, that is raising right now approximately, um, eight hundred thousand or so in local revenue and. Makes us eligible to receive a state match every year, so. Um, but this is the slide with just some statistics and won't go into all of them, but two hundred communities now have adopted it. Then it's one of those two hundred communities, seventy, over seventy percent of the state's residents live in a community with CPA. Uh, it's raised three point four billion in the last twenty-five years, um, thirty-seven thousand acres, uh, preserved, um, um. Over thirty thousand housing units either built or supported, um, and seventy-six hundred, uh, historic reservation projects, next slide. Um, one of the things we do as community preservation is we put get, uh, committee is put to get our plan. We're in the process of updating our plan for twenty twenty-five and that is probably on our next meeting, we'll be, we'll be finalized and we'll have a newly published, updated, uh, community preservation plan. Um, we are really appreciative that our applicants often cite the plan as, in, in, in cite parts of the plan as to why they're applying for this type of project. Um, so, um, the plan hopefully has been helpful to applicants to, whether their project is one eligible or two fitting with some of the priorities. Uh, the community preservation committee has established, next slide. Um, it's been a growing success, uh, first year out of the gates, we got fifteen eligibility applications and we're able to fund the budget. Um, twenty-three eligibility applications in the next year, um, we were able to fund thirteen. And this year, twenty-four eligibility applications initially came in with, um, uh, what is going to town meeting, not yet funded, but fifteen recommended. Next slide. Um, this is, uh, assuming approval at town meeting, uh, and we've been blessed to have, uh, town meeting, overwhelming support at town meeting, uh, the first two years. Um, but this is, uh, assuming this year's slate is adopted, uh, this is the, uh, split of money essentially, forty, almost forty-two percent going to open spaces recreation. Thirty-one percent to the community housing and twenty-seven percent historic or va- preservation. We have not as committee taken a hard position of a third, a third, a third, but we, that is a general thing we keep in mind. We like to keep the three legs of the stool relatively equal, um, as we evaluate projects. So a total of three point eight million dollars, uh, uh, in funding over the three years. Next. Um, we also try to keep some balance in mind when we evaluate projects on terms of, um, town initiated. And what I call town department or, or town commission projects initiated by Parks and Rec or Conservation Commission or the Select Board. Um, sixty-one percent of our funding has gone to town initiating projects. The thing about CPA that's really neat, um, is the fact that voters have to vote for this. And I think in many communities across town, well, and certainly here in Milton, we are proud of the fact that thirty-nine percent are resident-led initiatives. That is a grassroots, this is the grassroots law. It's a, a law that encourages people to dream about what could be improved in their neighborhood, uh, walking trails, but what have you. Um, so thirty-nine percent of our projects are, are, were, didn't come from, it did, it didn't initiate with the town government, but initiated with town residents. Um, so we're proud of that balance, so, so next slide. Um, we also are proud of this balance, even though this seems a little maybe out of balance to some people, but ninety percent of the projects, uh, our projects are actually ready to go. Um, projects that will result in new open space or improved playgrounds or new housing or, um, historic preservation, um, uh, preserve. Um, um, less than ten percent of our projects have been to studies and plans, um, and that's, uh. We are proud that we have flexibility within CPA to fund studies and plans. Um, there's a couple, uh, we're sitting in a great example of where we funded last year a study for the Art Center windows. Small amount of money, they had to bring in a historic preservation, this is a historic building, historic preservation council to. Create a plan for how to replace or improve or restore the windows here. Um, on the slate for this town meeting is an actual funding of those windows, uh, project. Uh, so that study, uh, perfectly parked, started with a study, it's now a product. Um, and there's a number of examples where our studies have turned into full-blown projects over the, even over for the first three years, next slide please. Um, here are the top five projects we funded to date, um, uh, Winter Valley Expansion, thirty-six units for low-income seniors. Um, the Forest House Farm renovation, uh, perfectly parked playground, the LED lighting upgrade at the Little Guile Fields. And Milton lockup are the top five over the first three years, um, next slide. These are just the, um, articles, uh, uh, this was a, uh, a presentation we also gave at the Warren Committee last week. Um, so this is article thirty-four, I believe, uh, which is just setting the budget for next year and next slide. Our thirty-five is there are slates of funded projects for this year, recommended projects. Uh, we're pleased that the Warren Committee unanimously voted, um, last week to, um, recommend a yes vote, uh, next slide, next slide. Um, and then these are just three examples of what's in this package, uh, in front of town meeting this year, um, that receiving to the, and the cemetery. Um, I've walked by it a number of times, I didn't appreciate its history or what it was actually, but, um, um.
I've been inside the door.
And, and how recently it's been used, it's actually, um, been used as recently as in COVID, um, where we, as a student, we were able to, um, um. Temporarily store.
Remains.
Remains, um, that other communities didn't have a similar, uh, place when, when, um, yeah, when, you know, I think in, in the winters, uh, particularly, we, 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 um. They raised, so, so, um, but it's received little to no repair from ages over seven hundred and forty-five years, so, um, we're pleased to recommend funding for this, uh, next slide. Um, the Collicott, kind of new play yard improvements, that's a PTO sponsored project and they come to us, um, substantial private fundraising as well as hopefully, uh, the community sees fit, uh, some CPA funds. And next slide. Um, and the Apple mentioned Warf Park Replantation Project, which we funded a couple of initial, some plans, planned for that and, um, starting to get into, um, some, um. Furthering of those plans and, and funding, hopefully eventually construction on this project. We've really been impressed with the progress of, and then working with the farmer's market folks and, um, the select board and trying to, um, keep advancing this project forward. So I think that is it. So, um, I don't know if either Jenny want to say, but that's my presentation.
Oh, no, that was very fun. The only thing I would add is that for each of these categories, the state requires a ten percent commitment of the funds that we have, so we start with that as a baseline. And then from there, we, we, we.
Questions, comments, Ms. Mustard?
Thank you. Um, could you explain a little bit about when we first went into this program, what the state match was in terms of percent dollars as well? And where we've been the past couple of years and what the future trend looks like?
Yeah, so, um, we, during the campaign, um, I was part of the yes campaign on this, uh, during the campaign, the, the campaign committee. Uh, estimated that our first year match would be twenty-five percent. First year match actually turned out to be thirty-one percent. Um, we received, uh, matches, um, of thirty-one percent.
Sorry, eighteen percent.
Eighteen percent and the projection this year is fourteen percent. CPA is a victim of its own success at the state level, two hundred communities have now adopted it, so that five gets split.
Yes.
By more and more communities every year. The other thing that's happening is that the state match is, um, reliable in the sense that it's not based, subject to appropriation. It's, but it is based on a fifty dollar fee at the registry of gains. And when refinancing activity goes to almost zero, which is what we're at now, um, those funds suffer. So we're, we're suffering something on the collection side because of the current mortgage rates, basically. Um, and we're also suffering because more, every year, there are more communities adopt, there are four more communities this November, another community has it on this spring, so. So that's the, the, um, I was actually just at the state house today, ironically, uh, for a, um, a briefing that the statewide community preservation coalition did for legislative aides. Um, and, um, we are preparing for next year, a package that will go, uh, to hopefully be introduced by some of their supporters in the legislature. Um, and, um, will seek to do a number of things, but to increase that state match. And that's exactly what happened in twenty nineteen, I think it was where that match is going down to as little as eleven percent. And that legislation resulted in us getting a thirty-one percent match that first year.
Thank you.
Peyton?
I think the, the only other thing that I would say related to the state match is, um, from twenty nineteen when it really got low, up until last year. Um, funding for the CPA was included in the supplemental budget, which really, you know, artificially inflated how much the state could match. But last year, there was no item in the supplemental budget and, you know, we don't anticipate one this year. Um, so, you know, part of Tom's work with the legislature is to try to get both the governor and the legislature to support supplemental funding since so many communities that adopted the program. You know, the thing, they really want to keep the, um, state match up.
Thank you.
The one other piece of clarification in terms of income that we're thinking about is that now some towns have as much as a three percent, um, tax, um, property rights in the maintenance, as you know, it's one percent.
One percent, right.
So that could, it could change, I mean, we could propose, let's up the one percent, and probably not a good time to do that right now, um, but in terms. But in terms of thinking about revenue in the future, that that's a possibility.
I was just gonna follow up with, you know, it gradually has gone down from the state. I mean, I have friends that are in different towns and they entered it, it was a lot higher. So, given the, I mean, you're at the State House and given the budget, I would say that I would anticipate it's probably gonna go down.
Well, it has gone down and it's gone back up again. As I said, it went from eleven percent to thirty-one percent because of the state action in twenty nineteen. So it's not just been a continual downward slope. It, the, the interesting thing about CPA from a political point of view is it's a powerful decision. Two hundred communities representing seventy percent of the state's residents have CPA. That's a lot of state reps and a lot of state senators who want to bring home the bacon for their communities. So it's gonna go back up. I promise it will go back up.
Tom Tom said that.
For twenty-five years. But it, I mean, once Boston adopted it. Springfield adopted it, once New Bedford and Fall River adopted it. We now have cities with towns and rural communities in Western Michigan. It's a great coalition. Other issues, the envious of that coalition. So we'll, we'll work at it and sometimes it takes several years for it to go back up. But we will be at there. I happen, as you should, full disclosure, I happen to chair the statewide community preservation coalition and have
Thank you.
I just want to say, I don't know that that is gonna be going up. There's a massive Medicaid shortfall and other things that are coming from the federal government. So with all due respect, I'd rather have people keep their health insurance than for us to fix some playgrounds and historic buildings. I'm just saying that because
It doesn't compete with them. Because it's a lockbox trust.
That they have at the state? It's not part of the free cash?
No, no, it doesn't compete with.
All right, well, then I take all my bad money.
That's the other beauty. It's a really elegantly designed really, and I'm not saying it's perfect, but it's a really elegantly designed lot that doesn't have to compete with those, as you point out. Very compelling.
See, when I learn things, I can take things back.
I'll tell you what, I'll say it, but the one thing is, Mr. Bradley's in Novus.
I know. I read about it tonight.
Go ahead, Mr. Zoll.
Sorry. Could you just let us know a little bit? So I, I think it's fantastic that forty percent of these proposals that are funded, you know, forty percent of funding is going to citizen-led petitions. Can you tell us a little bit about how you work with folks if they come in with an idea to get them to a compliant place? Cause we know lots of people come in with great ideas, but they're always, they're not always immediately ready to go to the, to CPA.
So I probably should let my colleagues, committee talk, because I, I've been showing patience sometimes. And, and I, we really need to rounds the eligibility round and the full funding round. These guys talk me out of that every time, because the eligibility round plays a really important role in what you're just talking about. Where people come in with an idea, it might not be fully based, it might not even be eligible. A few times, we, you know, some of those non-funded projects were just not eligible for CPA uses. But it allows the committee to engage with those citizens and talk that through, talk about whether it is eligible certainly, but also how other funds could be, you know, could be raised privately to, because we don't, you know, we only have a million dollars. It's, it's great that we have a million, but it's with twenty-four applications. We, what was this year? I think we
Four point six.
Four point six million in requests in the initial eligibility phase. And we only have a million, you know, basically to fund. So it helps us refine those projects. It helps us give, we've been able to connect some projects together and getting people to talk to each other. So it's been, it's a really uncommitted beyond because of that type of engagement and interaction we can have with town residents.
Yeah. Your system really helps and that sort of flushes out and encourages a discussion. And in some cases, some folks have come in with a great, you know, balloonish idea and have walked away with, after some conversation, maybe there should be some planning first. And maybe some community discussions, that kind of thing, before you come back there at all.
The other thing that we pushed a lot is getting outside funding, patching funding, going for grants, you know, doing some low fundraising. The scope of what we're able to do when making money go further and by having a two-stage process. We can get people to really focus more and look more broadly to allow us to fund a greater number of projects.
That would be a great number for your presentation, actually, how much matching funding you have helped land.
That's probably the reason why you went here is that some of the grantees are frustrated that they're so close and they can't get full funded, they can't get their projects completed without going to specifically, yeah, specific initiatives. So specifically, Peppermint Park is one. Farmers Market is the second. At least for me, you know, I wear multiple hats. This hat, my new state hat, but I very involved in private funding in this town for many, many years to the highest level. And that's even discussed by other private entities, like why we have to, when see, like, I, I'll just be very blunt. So you got a hundred twenty-two thousand dollars in studies, but that hundred twenty-two thousand would probably fund Peppermint Park. And they'd be ready, they're shovel-ready, they're just don't have the money. And the key thing about Peppermint Park is that, as you, I'm sure you heard that presentation. There isn't even a park, that's not a park, that'll be the only, the only thing that exists. And the town's taking all kinds of, as town meeting voted to carve this out in perpetuity, you know, it's between Conland and Parkland. That's just, that's something that was brought to us that, and so when I looked at some of the studies, I'm like, I think no, these never get done. Like the one that holds part of DCR land, and the rep before me had talked to me about that project, because his feeling was that should go to DCR, they should be paying for that building. DCR's put nothing in, it's historic as that building is, unlike the Yard Cove. And I'm not, I'm just using this buildings of a similar age that are like, that, that's you're putting money towards the possibility of Love and Russia Road. And there's a rep in Boston who has a completely different idea. What he wants to do with that, a lot more seniority than we do. So like, that's, I just don't want to waste any dollars, like Peppermint Park, and I, and I'm, and I'm only saying, and I said it, like, we gotta bring this in, because when I started, and I'm not, you're right. You know, you get a study and you get reality. But there's, when you're so close of just that much, one less study in one given year, or two less studies in a given year can make something like Peppermint Park a reality, to us, that's just a win-win. That's a win-win.
So we love Peppermint Park Playground Project.
We do too.
We funded it three years in a row. I think it's the only project we've funded for three years in a row. We love the project. It needs another three hundred or four hundred thousand dollars.
No, I don't think it's that much. That's what the budget they showed us.
So we could not fund it in its entirety. But let me, let me shift to one thing. We, at our last meeting, brought in Stuart Sagnor, who's the Executive Director of the Community Preservation Coalition. And we had him do a presentation for not just us, but also for the town accountant and the town treasurer and the town administrator on bonding. We have not bonded yet. Hundred and ten, two hundred communities have bonded CPA. Now, we're new. And that does, that would allow us to take a look at Wolf Park or Peppermint Park in a different fashion. And the possibility of funding a higher percentage of it.
Exactly, as a leap on.
So, yeah, exactly. So now that restricts us in future years, because we have to pay that's if it's out of the CPA revenue stream. So, so there's a, you know, there's a flip side to that as well. But we, we had Stuart in, it was a great presentation. I think he made all of us feel like it's not rocket science to do this. A lot of CGCs have, have recommended and have successfully bonded funds and worked with their town treasurer and successfully in that. So that is something, you know, before we can, we can take a look at. But, you know, we, we love, we love that project. And we, we've, you know, yeah.
And we specifically asked the Peppermint Park folks, is that with this amount of money, will you be able to build something? And they said yes. So it's not as if they have to wait to fund the whole thing. They will be able to get started as soon as the money is.
No, I don't think so. I, I think we've had a project in town, a town park, that we're not able to start unless you
Not saying that they start on the whole project, but they carve out phase one, that they can do with the existing funding while they continue to pursue, you know, phase two.
Not, not the wood stain.
I mean, could it, could you build a small portion of the playgrounds?
You could.
Back a year later, add onto it, sure. Could you prep the site and then come back to it a year later? But that's assuming it's gonna get more funding from private sources or from other town sources or from CPC in future years. So to start building something without knowing what the end product will look like. I think it's, from discussions with members in town, I have a conversation too, but it's like, you know, are these, in taking a big step back, is a playground to be built in Milton, a new playground? Is that, does that need to be something that isn't funded a hundred percent by the town or ninety percent of it? Or really, like, I, it doesn't feel like there's necessarily a game plan in terms of what that split should be. Whether there should be a split in the first place and what that split should be. So I think that's probably their conversations that we would like to have moving forward, so that we have parents who have other jobs. And I know that's been successful in the past. But it doesn't mean it's always gonna be successful that a group of wheels are raised that kind of money when there are other resources.
Raise a whole bunch of problems.
Another before succeed.
Just be, before CPA, it's like, you know, successfully did extraordinary fundraising job. We, we're not trying to put additional burdens on them, but we, we, we also have been trying to help Peppermint Park. One member of our committee, Ronald Bosh, who is, has sat with folks. They took initial steps, in fact, some of our early money was helping them set up a five-one C three. So they could get, they could apply for grants. So we, we've been trying to assist them, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the appropriation in front of town meeting this year. So that's a big chunk towards the six hundred thousand dollar budget that they have. And then seventy-five thousand and forty thousand the year before that. So, so again, it's three hundred and sixty-five thousand invested in that project. We want to see that successful work. We, we would, we would, you know, we would anticipate if, if there's still some need coming forward next year, we would be willing to entertain that. I, I agree. I live on that side of town.
Right. I believe they're getting some income coming.
Yeah, they're, they're doing a good job. We, we're, I mean, I talked to the, the, yeah, Lisa and her colleague. Were doing a great job and they're trying to, you know, do everything we can within our power to, to see them successful. Because that's, that's a great project.
I'll ask one question. What is the financial, I mean, you have, you have the bank, what's the financial liaison? Is that on every, is that on every CPA?
They recommend that you have somebody.
Yeah. We, I work with the assessors office, the comes-ups, and the treasurer's office to come up with an estimate of the year's local receipts. And then I work with the community preservation coalition, who works with the DOR to, you know, estimate what the grant is gonna be. I had to work very hard at the treasurer's office, because the previous treasurer refused, although it's required in the law. He refused to set up a separate account for this, so they could track interest income and where do interest income on all that money. So, you know, working with the treasurer's office, we got them to set up a separate account, so they could track and give us the interest that were due. And so, you know, I worked with them to create this budget, each year, that's budget articles.
Does the money from the registry of deeds come yearly, monthly, as a company?
It doesn't come to this town at all. So this is one of the, this is the second one. So the money from registry deeds collected by Norfolk County, but every other county, and it goes into a state trust. And then it gets distributed back out. So we don't get, we don't, we probably wouldn't want to get just the registry activity in the town of Milton, because our match is probably more than, than we're getting. It was one of the arguments to pass it, right? In twenty twenty, a number of voters said, wait, our registry deed fees are going to fund CPA in Canton or in Braintree? And that was true. So now hundred and fifty communities are contributing to, their, their registry deeds fees to Milton and other, other communities. And so it's a statewide pool that gets then distributed out based on, you know, twenty percent of the what you raise locally or eighteen percent or whatever the match is that year.
Because he sends his annual report to all the residents and makes all the money.
So I want to go back to the, the GoFundMe. So I just looked it up. They have a seventy-five thousand dollar goal for Peppermint Park. Well, you just need to Google Peppermint Park GoFundMe, Milton, Mass, pops right up first thing. It's a seventy-five thousand dollar goal. That, they are saying, is securing the remaining fifty percent required for the playground construction. This has been up for twenty-seven days. To date, they've raised six thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. At this rate, the kids that could use it are gonna be in high school. So I guess my problem that I'm having with this, and, and Mr. Callahan, you and I spoke, and I, I, I heard you. I'm still having issues with this, and I understand that, you know, everybody needs a little love. But I'm wondering why we aren't fully funding something that is absolutely shovel-ready right now. And they're saying fifty percent is what's required. They're, it's gonna take them
It's not shovel-ready.
It absolutely, it absolutely is shovel-ready.
They have the design, they finalized the design.
They have a, a preliminary design, so they have any plans and specifications and things like that. But, you know, we work with them very hard to get that, you know, so that they could do private fundraising. And they decided that the only way they could do it effectively was to get a five-one C three. And so they've only had them for a couple of months. So they're starting to put in applications for things. And it'll come, I mean, you know, if it's a priority for the town, it could go into town's capital.
Do you ever, do you ever foresee there being a project that you would fund a hundred percent?
We funded some small, I mean, the window project here. We have funded some small projects a hundred percent.
The town board would never fund a five-one C three project, it just couldn't happen.
We have a five-one C three, but capital, capital put a lot of money into the playground plans. You know, and, and the co-put a lot and that's where we anticipated that they, that Peppermint would go. But we continue to support it, we give it a bunch of minds, anything, so.
And I think they're applying for the, I've been told they're applying to the Ice House developer, they're applying to other foundations for, for funding.
So the Ice House was given the income.
So I just wanted, to this point, Ms. Bradley, saying, on this list here, can you just go through and tell us which ones on this list are studies?
Not just on that list, but at the end of the article, there's a verbal description of each project.
It was good for PowerPoint presentation, tough to read.
I think there's three studies listed in there.
Yeah. The Pine Tree Brook Naverd Association is a study to, in this the study of invasive species, basically, along Pine Tree Brook. The
Excuse me, can you just also say the cost of each of these as you're going through? It's just for people that are watching as well.
It's a, sorry, thirty-five thousand, thirty-five thousand. And there is a study for the GoToCircle park. It's, it's really a community engagement process to engage the residents around GoToCircle above. Um, it's a, it's really a community engagement, um, process, uh, to engage the residents around GoToCircle about what's. How to restore and, and minding, um, that park and do it with, with community sport. That was a really fantastic, um. Sort of grassroots effort. Uh, that's a twelve thousand dollar study. Um, and, um.
It's a recreational.
And yeah, the recreational master plan, um, that Aetos, Kevin Prism. Um, the head of Parks and Rec came to us with a. Project that he felt like he's been trying to get funded in this town for many, many years. Um, and he finally was able to get, um, to be a, um, foundation. It's, um, at forty, twenty, forty, forty dollars.
And they're getting matched up almost a bunch.
Right.
Um, and then. The department, you know, for go, for when, whatever where it is. Um, application for some specific construction project because they felt that this plan. They really needed an overall plan for all the common facilities in order to prioritize and determine which ones to bring forward first. So that is, you know, so that is, you know, a chunk that is a study. But their, their concept was to help them prioritize and come up with scripts of work for our projects that they would go for funding in later years.
In Whorf, Whorf Park probably would fit most people's definition, but again, we can't get to. We can't get Whorf Park to where it's shovel ready unless we fund the studies.
Well, they get that, they get.
Beverly Park, the forty thousand dollars got them to where they are today. So, um, I, I understand. I've heard a little bit at the Warren Committee too about. You know, there's a couple, you know, one or two members of the Warren Committee were, were concerned about the study. That's why we did the, the tabulations. Nine point six percent. So a pretty small slice of the CPA pile. And it's resulted in fundable projects. We're sitting in one right now. Um, and, and Beverly Park is an example of it. Whorf Park is an example of it. So. Um, I think this studies is a, um, really, uh, defensible investments in future grants. Will some of them maybe, maybe not go forward? Possibly. But, um, uh, I think that's, uh, the beauty of CPA that we need absolute flexibility to fund that type of investment in future ideas.
I guess I would just wanna follow up one big thing with. You know, when you have these projects and you have these studies, if you have a project that. You know, like some of these studies are like first time putting in for some of these studies, could they have been pushed off a little? To finish up one of these projects such as Beverly Park? You know, that's what I'm looking at because, um. You know, where the, like, we're looking at, you know, some DCR properties, for instance, for studies of. Well, we have something right here that could be finished potentially or close to finish. That's my question. Could it, you know what I mean?
So, so when it comes close to finish here.
Beverly Park presented at six hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. The six hundred and twenty seven thousand dollar project.
Total?
Total.
Sixty seven five thousand.
I'm gonna say.
So we couldn't have. Funded all of that.
The other thing I would say about the DCR project is. They're looking for custodian for the building, any use for that building. But adjacent to that building is six point two acres of park and rent property that's not used at all. And so we saw that as probably the major opportunity in town to create a new significant recreational opportunity. Because there's, you know, together with the DCR property, there's posted ten acres of property there.
We're very familiar with that piece of property, but.
Yeah, so that's, that's some of our thinking. I mean, we debate these things a lot.
So.
Just to, just to reiterate that in, for this round, we had twenty four applications and we're only recording fifteen. So some of them were pushed off to next year.
We get that. I, I, I get like, like, we, like, uh, so like, to me, pine tree jumped out of me, as you're aware. We've been in a massive, who brought by eleven residents. When over three hundred residents came.
That I seem to do.
No, I know that, but it's the same crew, it's the same. And currently, they're currently, the D E P is defend, defending their own decision. Proving that, that field. And this is right next to it. And that, to me, I was like. The investigator was like a red flag right away. Where'd this come from? Like, just.
With all respect.
No, and I, and I realize you, I'm not, but it's like, I'm, I'm not, I just. Alright, so we're not gonna vote this tonight, I don't think. Do we need to vote this thing? No. So we're not gonna vote this.
It's on, it's on our, um, perfect.
We already put it on. Right, we're, we're not gonna vote the specific out. I mean, uh. I don't think, tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
We always rec, uh, welcome the opportunity to come before you and if you have any questions, you know how to reach us. And, um, we're happy, I, you know, like I said, we're really proud of, um.
I get that, but I will miss Bradley when he sees something so close. And, and I added up today a hundred and twenty two thousand, like. To me, it was like, let's get this project done. And.
Yeah, and we, we'd be happy to talk to them further. It's based on the budget they submitted. They're not that close. But, you know, uh, we wanna see this project as the. You've funded it for three years in a row and. Yeah, yeah. All of your hard work, we're all very grateful for it. Cause it really does make Milton a better place.
And even the second year of funding, they didn't meet our, our application deadline. You know, they came in late. We really had to scramble to give, you know, cause we wanted to give them some seed money that they could use for private fundraising. So we had to reorganize everything after our deadline to give them seventy five thousand dollars. To think that that could be seed money they could take to potential funders. You know, so we, I think we have bent over backwards to do everything we can for Beverly Park and we will continue to do so.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion update approval FY twenty twenty six budget, FY twenty twenty six capital budget, Mr. Milano.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, no updates on the budget. Uh, I, let's cycle down. The Warren Committee had approved, um. The budget as submitted to the Warren Committee, uh, so that recommendation is going to the town meeting that they wrapped in their work last week. Um, so no updates as of yet, uh, this moment rather, on the discussion of this budget, uh, that Warren. Should be hopefully ready and online, um, first part of next week and then mailbox is. Start with that. Um, in terms of the capital budget, the capital budget is included in the warrant that I put in the packet. It's art for four. Um, it's eight hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars of, um, free cash appropriations going to. You know, equipment replacements, vehicle replacements, uh, a few facilities projects. And then, uh, in terms of the bonded capital items, that's four point eight million dollars in bonded capital items. Uh, uh, fire engines replace engine two, uh, on its rotational cycle. Million dollars for rotary construction, a million, a hundred thousand dollars for sidewalk construction, which are kind of our more usual typical approvals. Um, in terms of the enterprise funds, some improvements for vehicle replacements, water meter replacements. Um, but. Very typical capital budget. We've kept it, um, where we would normally like to fund these, uh, and. Regardless of the budget uncertainty, because we wanna continue to invest in our capital facilities and infrastructure so we don't, uh, fall too far behind to be able. Um, and I'll just flag in terms of one, uh, one additional, kind of a new item. Um, is that we're, we're hoping to add some additional vehicles, EV charging stations at town facilities. So that we can either stand, um, our fleet in terms of electric replacements for our administrative vehicles that don't. Uh, have that frontline focus in terms of, um, having good equipment. So I'd say further questions in terms of the operating budget or the capital budget, uh, but those are both in the packet that was distributed, uh.
Mister Chair.
In the packet.
Ms. Bradley.
So may I ask, was this voted on by the Warren Committee?
Yes.
Yes.
That is incorrect then. Because we have not voted on this yet.
We're gonna do it right now.
But they can't vote on something until we do. And so I just wanna say, no, we did not. And I brought it up the last time.
And then didn't we vote?
No, because we hadn't seen it because it wasn't included in the packet. There are procedural things that are happening that we are not following. And that to me. Is not okay. So if the Warren Committee voted to put this in the warrant, in, in the warrant, and we haven't voted on it yet, therefore they can't do that.
It was submitted and approved by the Capitol, Capitol Planning Committee.
But it wasn't by us. We have to approve that.
Capitol Committee is, has always been a submitting.
So we have to, any article that is in the warrant is from either us or the planning board. We did not approve this.
You wanna do it now? Try to be approved now.
I am fine with doing it now. That's not my point.
I get, I get, I get, okay, I get it.
It's, I, and Peter, of course, stepped out as soon as he gets back, he can ask Ken, but. He won't know the byline. But I, if there is a way that we could try and make this actually be procedurally proper moving forward. Because I won't be here. And these things are not okay because we are technically violating.
I get it. I get it. I'm not, I'm not, I get it.
And if that means we have to have an extra meeting, then we have to have an extra meeting. If that is the Warren Committee needs to slow down, the Warren Committee needs to slow down.
No, I wouldn't. I think we took the Capitol Committee's recommendation provided to them. So they worked and did their work based on us telling them this.
But the selector hadn't seen this capital budget until right now in this packet.
I thought we did see it. I still think we voted on it.
Absolutely did not see it. And Ms. Musto backed me up in our last meeting. It was not in our packet for the last one. Mr. Milano said that as well. This is the first time we are seeing the capital budget. I'm gonna vote for it. It's fine.
Okay, you wanna question?
Why are you saying that this is, it can bite us?
Right, okay.
So can we just cross our Ts and, you know, loop our Ps?
Alright.
I'm looping my Ps.
That's a new one.
Because I do not want things like this slipping through the cracks moving forward.
A good one. Point well noted on.
Thank you. Thank you. They're just thinking there.
No, I.
He's starting to go, if I'm wrong.
No, no.
He took, we always take what capital wants.
So, yeah, yeah. So it even says in the warrant, submitted by the selector. And we did not submit that.
No, that's right. I think.
So actually what should happen is we are gonna vote tonight and the Warren Committee should re-vote.
If it's unchanged, the recommendations, it's their recommendation. They've submitted the recommendation this.
They're voting on something that, uh, we can change.
Then, but I, I wouldn't be concerned about that process as long as there is no.
Change. Watch me change it by a penny.
Then they can have a green sheet accordingly.
Try to change it.
I'm just changing it. I'm just saying.
I get it, you get it.
So he's gonna be watching this stuff, whether it's Lynn or Peter or Nick or somebody.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the FY twenty twenty six capital budget. Is that okay?
I will say that.
Thank you so much, all those in favor. Okay, item. Eight, am I right? Eight?
Seven.
Seven, discussion approval, annual town meeting Monday.
I thought we already did that.
We want articles, move to approve the twenty twenty six annual town meeting warrant.
As I provided the warrants in the motion, in the packet, um. It includes all the articles, all the budget articles. Uh, the three additional articles outside of the budget are. The, um, life trespass by law, the A D U by law, and a cyclan review by law, the lies there. Budget articles that are annually recurring. Although they are obviously the. Oh, right, dependent ones.
We voted on this last time.
Okay.
We, um, are separating out the election warrant and the town meeting warrant. So we would like approval of the town meeting warrant.
But we don't have to, we don't have to do the, um.
Nothing to do on the articles.
The articles, right?
Use the warrant, the warrant, right. The warrant is included.
Warrant time.
Someone make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the town meeting warrant. Is that right?
Yeah, you got it, yeah. Twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty five.
Says here, move to approve twenty twenty six annual town meeting warrant.
There's a title.
FY twenty six maybe.
No, no.
It's the regular.
Would you do that? That'd make fun.
People pay attention.
Because it's great to give me an aneurysm before I have to give me twenty one days.
Don't say that. I have one more. Don't say that.
Alright, so.
Also, motion made by Ms. Bradley, second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number eight, discussion approval, April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, annual town election.
Mister Chair, I make a motion to approve the special town meeting, nope. Yep, special town meeting on June twenty.
No, no.
One eleventh.
April twenty nine, twenty twenty five, annual town election.
Thank you. Said by Ms. Musto, all those in favor.
Aye.
Okay, item number nine, discussion, date approval. Special town meeting, June sixteen, twenty twenty five. One on out. Let's see the list imposed.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Why is, um, there's no mention in June about doing the M B T A Communities Act?
If, I realized it tonight.
Oh.
I have a little, I have a hand wrote it. Uh, last night, the planning board, uh, worked on, worked more towards, um, an M B T A Community zoning article. So that would be, um, the primary reason to have special town meeting. So that would be on there. In addition, the planning board has submitted the East Multinoble District zoning article, the floodplain zoning article, which is in October here. And then, as we discussed in terms of, of our town property. Um, I know that the local historic district, study committee has been working again on the bylaw. So we anticipate potentially.
We wanna keep this for one night, June, like, one night, cause there's not going more than one night.
Then, if there's going to be a fall town meeting, additional articles could appear in the fall. But as of right now, that's what we're preparing for place holders. Um, what's on the agenda plus M B T A Communities.
Okay, so I, I moved to, is it okay with you, Mister Chair?
It's note that we've already approved that date, so no vote was to be taken and we don't have final articles. I wouldn't.
So we would not, so that approval there is for nothing.
Correct. November tenth.
So, uh, 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 to the executive office of Health and Human Services regarding hospital capacity, ongoing impacts of recent hospital closures.
I relatedly provided a draft of that, um, although it spoke, or Ms. Musto, I think that we need, it needs some work, so.
We'll defer, we'll defer that.
Can we defer that?
We'll defer, we'll defer that to the twenty second. Item eleven, uh, change board directors, Wallace and Ballco.
Mister Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the change to of the, of the board of directors at the Wallace and Ballco. Second.
Second, Ms. Musto. Uh, motion, Ms. Musto, same as all those in favor.
Aye.
Item twelve, discussion approval.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the donation to the Melton Coalition from Mike's Five K to crush substance abuse in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars. Way to go.
Wait a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Musto, all those in favor.
Aye.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna say it before.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. As a reminder, I mentioned this in last meeting, annual town elec, April twenty ninth, annual town election. Um, if you wanna vote by mail, you do have to apply to vote by mail, April twenty second. And I, again, it's the deadline to submit your vote by mail application. If you've already signed up, um, the first batches of the little vouch should start going out, um, this week or early next week. Um, if you're not registered, want to register to vote, the deadline can be so as of April eighteenth. Um, it's a Friday, the Tom Clark's office in Tom Hall, Tom Clark's office, should say, will be open till five P M. Uh, that day, uh, straightforward registrations. Um, this weekend, the Sustainable Milton and B P W are teaming up for, clean, read up, clean up. Uh, Milton, additional information is available on our website, um, social media, uh, Sustainable Milton, I think as well. Uh, folks who wanna participate. Uh, a couple of public forums coming up, uh, Town Farm Public Forum, very related to the future of Town Farm tomorrow night. That's, um, at seven P M. At the Conson aging also available on Zoom. Next Thursday night, April seventeenth, at seven P M, uh, planning board is holding a forum on M B T A Communities. Again, at the Conson aging and also available by Zoom. Um, Parks Department, Easter accessible this weekend, uh, Saturday, um. The nine to ten thirty, the hunt will follow that at Connecticut Paul. Um, I also wanted to acknowledge the worker Milton Police and making, um, several arrests in terms of mailbox stuff that they've been working on for some time. Um, folks, if you're, you know, sending checks by mail, if you can pay electronically. Um, do it electronically. It is, uh, a very routine, a crime that we're seeing towns convicted to, vendors on the work have, have been victim to. So, um, I myself was in any, that forum not too long ago, so it is, uh, interesting time. So pay electronically if you can. And, uh, lastly, the, uh, in terms of veterans agent, uh, that position was posted, um, with our veterans, just like Randolph, uh, we have candidates. Um, have applied, we're working on getting it to be lined up. Uh, I've been working with, uh, the American Legion, have a veteran participate, um, on that screening committee as well. So, uh, hopefully to have an events agent in place, uh, soon. And then just lastly, if you see a truck or a minivan or some kind of passenger van driving around, it's on it.
Aqua, aqua.
Aquaboo, yeah. Uh, Beta Group is an engineer. Uh, Beta Group is an engineering company there in town, um, observing the conditions of our roads, to update our pavement management plan. Uh, and are hopefully very high schools for our roads. Uh, but not a suspicious vehicle. Mr. Chair. Um, so I just wanna congratulate the Milton High School Theater Department for their first ever state win, which is fantastic, they are. Having a parade, which is starting at high school, they are here this Saturday, it's gonna mimic the route that was taken by the football team. For their uh state championship, um, there's gonna be a couple of trolleys, the high school boosters are putting it together, they'll probably spend super helpful. And organizing it and it's just a really great uh comment on the fabulous quality of the arts at our high school.
Quick question, Mr. Zull, what is the route start and finish?
It starts and finishes at the high school. And then it'll go down, it's like uh Brook, um.
You could have something to the deck.
So the only thing I wanna bring up from the chair's report, and I keep bringing this up, is Mr. Milano's review.
Yes, I thought.
I think that that is something that has to happen in the next week by all of us, and we need to vote on it at our final, my final meeting, which is the twenty-second. So who's co- who's compiling those?
I am, so if people could get everything to me by Monday, I'll have it come out, cause I'm leaving the country on Wednesday. Um, I'll get it done and am I send it, who am I sending it to?
So they should actually send them to Carla.
And I'm gonna ask uh, Mr. Zull, if not Mr. Zull, Mr. Zull is, if he will also fill it out, since he was um the board chair during that time.
Um, and may I add something, thank you, um, Nick, would you be able to resend out those forms to everybody again, so. Absolutely, thank you.
Good. So I just wanna um pull this up, this is a photo of uh George Roper. Is you come into the town of Milton from Rochester across the bridge at One Adam Street, that bridge is named after. George J. Roper, who was killed in action eighty years ago today, on April eighth of nineteen forty-five. And about sixty members of his family gathered on that bridge tonight to have a memorial, um, in his honor, and it was cold and freezing, but it was. Very fitting and um the Roper name goes very back, very deeply in this region, so you may remember the. Roper wallpaper store that was on Granite Avenue and Hilltop Street, which was there for many years, so, um. I told them that I wanted to mention this tonight and uh, congratulations and may he rest in peace, so. Thank you for that, and then finally, I will be here in. I'll be out of the country for the April twenty-second meeting, I was gonna zoom in, but I'm actually in France. In the morning, so I don't know that I'll do that, so this will be my final meeting with you, Ms. Bradley. And uh, you know, it. You're a whirlwind when you walk in this room, but since the day I met you, and I will say this to you as a credit to you. It's the day I met you when I was chief and you were first to the Warren Committee, you've always worked very hard for. Uh, the people of this town and worked very hard for everyone, um, and it's not easy, as you know, as we all know. And um, when you were first running, when we first met, and I said to you, it takes courage to put your name on it, uh. Out on the ballot, and you did that, and you've done that for the last three years, and it will be different without you here, and I tell you that now, so. Um, on behalf of all citizens of this town and everyone you have served, thank you.
It's been a long wait.
But you have a lot to do before. Won't come to work in status. So all of that, that's that's a future, um.
I know, can we do the.
Yes, public comment was false.
But I have response to the public comment, um, I wanna say that, um. What what Ms. Ms. Felton brought up today about the loss of the C O A grant money for the van. It pushed us at this point to over a million dollars that this town has either spent or lost in grant money. Specifically because of non-compliance with the M B T A communities. Those items are the election at sixty thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars, special council at two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Town council, we are approximating is twenty-nine thousand, the seawall at a hundred and forty-two point five, hundred and forty-two five. The fiber I net, two hundred and fifty thousand, the A D A compliance at thirty-five thousand. An I T grant that Rob went out for at a hundred and ten thousand and the C O A van at ninety-seven, three, three, four. For a grand total of one million nineteen thousand, a hundred and eighty-three. Um, that number is just gonna keep ticking, I also wanna remind folks that um at our last meeting. Mr. Milano did inform us that we could go for a grant to pay for somebody to do oversight and auditing. Which we can't even apply for because we are not in compliance with the M B T A Communities Act. Right now, the only thing it would take for us to be in compliance with the M B T A Communities Act is to file that piece of paper. That's it, we don't even need a plan, we just needed to file that piece of paper, and we didn't, and now we are out over a million dollars, um. And I think that that's a real shame, and it's a real detriment when we are looking at our residents to go out there and ask them for nine point five million dollars. Um, and here we are, just fiddling away over a million dollars, um, because we couldn't sign a piece of paper. So to me, this is a really big thing, I will be keeping a ticking total on this, um, because I think it impacts our people. And I don't think people actually recognize how much it is impacted, because we were told that it wouldn't impact, and here we are. There's no central place where people can find this information, um, I'd like to, you know, if Mr. Milano can put this somewhere on the. Town website, that would be amazing, where people can actually see what this is costing the town. Um, you know, we talk a lot about transparency, but in order to find these numbers, you have to ask the town clerk. You have to ask Mr. Milano, you have to find out what grants have been applied for, what ones are specifically denied because of M B T A, so for me. I think if we really are gonna be transparent and we're gonna talk about how we can work together as a community, I think we need to have the facts out there. So that is my two cents, not my last two cents, cause I have one more meeting, um, but that is my two cents for this evening, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Um, anyone else? I do wanna make one comment on this, second comment, on the first comment that was what I said. You know, all of us came into this role, we deal with department heads of all calibers, it's. You know, Mr. Milano, he has the powers of the town side, he worked for the school committee as well. I don't think, and at least for me in my current. A number one, going to somebody means to try and help balance a budget or try to find ways to do it, and the second one, for the members of this board. Um, no one has ever, ever come before a board in this history, time, history that I know of. In the span of eighteen months, a six million dollar deficit, it just is unheard of. And we have jumped, and especially you and Amy have jumped and twisted and manipulated and robbed Peter to pay Peter and. And and the idea that she will say this, that we're like, holding, we're trying to harm or do harm to them. We have done everything possible to try and keep this ship forward, going forward. N- none of this, our fault, none of this, anything that we had any control on, we've just been handed it week after week and done with it week after week. To try and make this go forward, and if anyone thinks that they wanna add another million dollars to a nine point five million dollars override. Go like to, go try and do it, because this is gonna be part of, we're already climbing up, man, I just don't have any answer to begin with. You wanna put another million dollars on it and it suggests that we would do it in a detrimental way, is why we did it, it's absolutely wrong, and I'm truly, truly ashamed. That she would come and speak to this board in such a manner, it's like, she knows how hard, I've talked to her first, she knows how hard we have worked at this, and uh. It doesn't help the issue, that's all I'm saying about it. Anything else? Thank you, um, okay, so sixteen, future meeting dates, the twenty-second, April thirtieth. Uh, May fifth, May sixth, and May seventh. Future general writers, Ms. Bradley, you got it?
Of course I do, Mr. Chair. I would like to bring up again, the I T committee has um moved what broadband committee. You guys are the best. I have no agenda.
I I have an agenda, actually, um, and um, Mr. Zullis mentioned previously, um, you know, that uh, he, he, you know, he. Wished that he could continue to play a role in um town government, obviously, we need, we don't know how the elections are gonna go, and then they happen, and then everything's changed. So, just occurs to me that if, you know, potentially, we, it would make sense. If Ms. Musto had hopes and dreams and things that she wanted to continue to do, if electioning didn't go in her favor, that she could. Maybe put that forward at the next meeting, and then same for you, Ms. Bradley, we know that you're not on the ballot.
My lighting bylaw is all I heard that way.
I just, I think it's important for us to to make sure that there's some continuity and.
I I will say this just about broadband, a- a- and I met with the end secretary the other day and. It's very lighting and, I I told her this afternoon, I mean, she was very bothered with me, she was like, cable's going away, it's like, it's it's archaic, it's it's. And one, I know on the budget level, on the budget side, I know Milk Cable sees it, I think the number of people drawing from it is like. So the state's idea of investing any money or advising people to invest money into. Anything that goes particularly to the homes, like you, you, you'd go on a dead end, it's not gonna exist anymore.
Yes, uh, that, I'm not gonna argue, but I just, for me, it was about. Well, not about the structure, it was about if 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 continuity, Ms. Musto.
Oh.
You just made me think about it, though.
Naming the next thing after a woman.
Well, I don't think if you do that tonight, it's.
The next thing that happens should be named after.
As a matter of fact. Let's, we'll get to that.
Oh, we're gonna get to that.
Alright, so we're going into, where are we going now? We're going to executive session when we get in. So, uh. So I'm gonna move to adjourn, I'm gonna read this, I'm gonna move to adjourn from open session, enter executive session for discussion regarding strategy with respect to litigation. The title Joe Henning et al versus planning board et al, law fox appear at foot settle action number. Two five eight two C V zero zero two nine three, based on my belief that the discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect. On the litigating position of the selector, the selector will not return to open session, do I have a second? All those in favor? I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Zull?
Yes.
Mr. Corvain?
Yes.
I saw, yes, and then, is this the second one here? Then there's a second executive session, and we'll move also and enter executive session for discussion regarding strategy with respect to litigation. The title town of Milton, O D R bracket number W E T twenty twenty-five dash zero zero four D E P. About forty zero four six dash zero six three zero, based on my belief that discussion of this matter. In open session will have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the selector, selector will not return to open session, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, this must, all those in favor, Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Corvain? Mr. Zull and myself, yes, play with adjourn, and thank you again to everyone for coming tonight, please, and especially to our host. This is something we have to do again, and thank you to Milk Cable Access for making this happen, thank you, Elaine, have a good night.